I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jordan?
Here.
Oakbridge? Smith?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincenzo?
Here.
Five members present, two absent.
Okay, I did receive two notifications from the absent council people. Unfortunately, had very last minute issues developed with both of them and they were unable to make it this evening, so we will try to do our best to get through with shorthand. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. Does anyone did not receive their copy of the minutes from the April 18 meeting? Does anybody have any questions or problems with those minutes as they received them? Okay, hearing none, I will accept the motion to accept the minutes from the April 18 meeting. Mr. Vincenzo, second. J.C. Thrash? He's been moved in seconded. We'll now roll call vote, please.
Jordan?
Here, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, the meeting from the April 18 meeting has been approved. The first, only item under new business is the reappointment of Ed Reese to Board of Zoning Appeals, which Mr. Murphy discussed the previous council meeting. He was unable to be here tonight and the mayor was not here last week, so we had to wait for her because it is a mayor's appointment. So at this time, Catherine, if you can talk.
Yes, I would like to reaffirm Mr. Ed Reese to the Board of Zoning Appeals at the recommendation of council and of Mr. Murphy.
I make that motion.
I beg your pardon?
I make that motion.
Thank you.
Second. Mr. Thomas, second. Okay, we'll take a vote, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenzo?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, Mr. Reese has been reappointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We appreciate his service to the city and my understanding is he's done an excellent job since he's been on there, so. Okay, we've got some handicaps tonight. The mayor has a hard time talking. We're short some people, but we'll do the best we can here. We'll go first to the mayor's report if she has a report.
Accepting your word tonight will be Jacob reading my report for me.
Okay, so I'm going to read this verbatim. I must begin by apologizing for not reading the mayor's report. I have laryngitis, so thank you, Jacob, for volunteering to read this. I attended the rec board meeting, which highlighted the exciting concert series soon to begin. Also, a new item added is charcuterie class, which will be held at the Ampli Theater on Cinco de Mayo or May 5. Met with our city attorney regarding pending matters and had a phone meeting with our H.R. team aligned. Sat in on a meeting with J.C. Thrash, Don Vincenzo, and Jeremy Greenwood, discussing the plan for starting the new infrastructure development. Held mayor's court, driving citations, and one zoning citation. At the recommendation of Mr. Tom Murphy, I appoint Mr. Ed Reese to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Good luck to the track teams at the OVACs this week. Make sure to go see the Wizard of Oz this week, this weekend, at the high school, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 P.M. Tickets can be ordered online, or at a website, or at the door. The big news, of course, was the visit by Governor Dewine on Thursday announcing the investment of $550 million into 32 counties compromising part of Appalachia and Ohio. We do not yet know how the apportionment will fall, but we will let the citizens of our town know as soon as we are privy to it. Big shout outs to the high school students and St. Clairsville Garden Club for assistance with spiffing up the front of our rec center. Eric Devi and Eric from the rec center worked very hard to set up tables, chairs, and clean. Thank you to Lendons for the loan of the beautiful flowers and plants, which so enhanced the doorway of the rec center. Shout out to Chief Arbens in our police department for providing extra security during his visit. Chick-fil-A for their more than generous donation of chicken, brownies, cookies, and coffee, and to the St. Clairsville Band for serenading the governor as he arrived. I had a phone call on Friday morning from the governor's liaison, Bonnie Ward. She told me that Governor Dewine was thrilled with his reception in St. Clairsville, so thank you all who made this possible. We have a great team and a great city of people who make things happen. God bless them all. During National Prayer Week this week, a reading will be held on Thursday, May 2 at noon on the courthouse steps proclaiming National Day of Prayer. Please include our country, our city, and Ukraine in your prayers. And lastly, if you haven't yet, please vote tomorrow. Thank you all.
Does anybody have any questions they want to attempt to ask the mayor?
The National Day of Prayer, when does that start?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow the reading starts.
Tomorrow.
That's the reading, tomorrow and Wednesday. And then the National Day of Prayer music starts at 11:45.
11:45.
Yes, the program, the actual program starts at noon. The speaker is Randy Martin Hall.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joanne Jones will provide music. So will Linda Jordan.
Martin, do you have a question?
Yes, if I may. With regard to the announcement of the plan for Appalachia, I had a good conversation with Jeremy and because the mayor couldn't talk, we texted a little bit, but it's my suggestion, obviously, the funds have not yet been fully approved by the legislature. However, I think they will be in a short time period and there's going to be a lot of local governments going after what seems to be a lot of money, but when you divide it up amongst 32 counties and within those 32 counties, you have cities, villages, townships, et cetera, it's not going to be much. I think that we, as a body, administration and council, need to start immediately thinking about what can we do to apply and where. Jeremy and I talked about four or five different things. Some are very obvious, whether it's infrastructure, parks, recreation, you know, whether it's the Central Park, whether it's the bike trail, whether it's some sort of infrastructure. But I think we need to be ready for when it's announced and be as proactive as we can. And I realize that until we see the guidelines, if you will, that come along with the application, but you still can prepare. This is very similar to the Capitol bill that's done every couple of years with the legislature and we applied every single time, the county and in my years with the county, we applied every single time for Capitol bill monies, but I think, and I don't know how we want to handle it, but I want to plant the seed now just for everyone to think about where we may want to go with this, whether it's extending the bike trail, trying to extend the bike trail, if you will, whether it's doing something at the park or the streetscape stuff. So I just appreciate Jeremy's here and mayor, you two, even though we were going back and forth because of your voice issues. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Martin. Yeah, if anybody has any thoughts or anything on that, I would merely suggest that you maybe put it in writing so it doesn't get forwarded to both the mayor and Mr. Greenwood so that they can get an idea from council where they would kind of like to look at maybe some possible improvements.
I have a question for the mayor here. When's the concert start? What week?
Memorial Day weekend, isn't it? I think it's Memorial Day weekend. I'll get you a list. We have a list. I don't have it with me, but we have a list of who the performers are.
There's stuff posted. I know there's stuff downstairs in Jim's office, too.
And it would be on the website, too. But yeah, it is Memorial Day weekend.
Any other questions directed from the mayor's? Okay, hearing no further questions there, we'll move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. As always, been a couple busy weeks of things. Council items I have for you guys tonight, legislation items, 2022-18, that's the advertisement for oil and gas lease, asking for that to be an emergency, just like last time before. I'll get into what happened with that and we'll go from there. 2022-19 is the 2018 ordinances. That needs to be passed in emergency if possible, too. Same thing for 2022-20, that's the 2019 ordinances. 2022-21, which is the 2022 or 2020 ordinances, and 2022-22, that's the 2021 ordinances. Yeah, that's a lot of stuff. This is the Walter Green information. What this does is it actually incorporates the state codes into our ordinances and everything else. Why it wasn't done, we just found out before 18 and 19, we don't know. It was never submitted. 2021-20, we were working on getting it done. 21, we just got the information Friday, so we were able to incorporate that into this mix also. The gas aggregation program, we're still working with the three groups, maybe look for council for some feedback from that. One of the groups is willing to actually maybe even write down a number for us as to what the savings would be. The other two groups are wanting it to be more of a request for qualifications rather than a request for price. So still going back and forth with a lot of them on that and we'll see what happens. Our Arbor Day celebration will be this Friday at 1:00 P.M. at the rec center. The oil and gas lease, we'll get back into that. So despite all of our efforts to make sure that every parcel that they were interested in is included, the company came back and said that they actually had three or four streets that they had thought that the county owned, but it turns out that there are streets. No parcel numbers with them, but they wanted to make sure that that got included into there, too. So we were going to have to redo that and advertise for those anyways. When the bid was due last Wednesday, they didn't actually even submit any of the information. They thought that what the package they had submitted to us originally was going to be acceptable and after conferring with the law director, we kind of said, no, it has to be per the bid spec information. It has to be in a sealed bid and submitted at this time and everything else. So we'll have to go back out to advertise for bids for those parcels, but we were going to have to do it for the streets anyway, so it's not that big of a deal, but it kind of is. So we're working with them and then whoever else is expressing any interest in it. Meetings, we had 16 various meetings. Obviously, the governor, that was a big one. Also, the week before that, I met with the director from the governor of Appalachia program from the state of Ohio and various other entities and back and forth. Projects, completed projects, obviously, the governor visit, that was a very big project. The rec center floor is finished. If no one's seen it, they should go down and look at it. It looks really, really nice. We're actually working on some other things down there, too. The lights for the gymnasium have been ordered. We ordered LED lights. The loan application for OWDA for the I-70 water line finally came through, so we are having a pre-construction meeting this week on that to go through. We also did some work on the cemetery sewer lift station. We replaced a check valve in there. Got that finished. Upcoming projects, this week, the end of this week, the all three water tanks are going to be inspected, then we will have, they will go back and then do a report for that and get it back to us. As I mentioned, the pre-construction for the I-70 project, we're going to have to get the oil and gas leases advertised again, some various trainings for staff. We're still looking at our inflow and infiltration control plan, going through stuff. Also, still looking at smoking the sanitary sewer system this summer and also still looking at the K-9 dryer station location in the police locker room. And then we've been working with the new H.R. firm on updating the administrative policies and procedures. Department work, the electric department had some underground primary repairs. They did a pole replacement on East High Street Extension, been trimming trees, also have done some work for the rec center lights, also repairing streetlights, and then looking at getting some billings and some meter readings. Water, wastewater, the I-70 project's going to be kicking off. We're fixing hydrants, curb boxes, and valves, still working on the rakes for there, and then I do believe we're still at currently eight, right, for water line breaks. So we've started this year out pretty slow, which is a great thing to be working on, knock on wood. A couple of the lift stations are still having issues with the sewer system, working on the West End Treatment Plant down by Rees-Bex. Also started the seasonal disinfection process, chlorinating the plant, both the West End plant and the main sewer plant. And then also, it's hab season, so we've started treating the reservoir to make sure there's not an algae bloom additionally. Street department, patching potholes, worked on the cul-de-sac on Becker Court, have started mowing, and we've also got the street sweeper. It's been out a couple of times now and taking care of some of the streets and stuff. Rec center, new floor, we mentioned that, and then also tomorrow's election day, so the center will actually be closed for the election, but we want to make sure people get out there. Police department, we finally got our payment application in for the body grant, our body camera grant, so we're working on that. The road signs, the radar signs are on Taylor and South Sugar right now. I'm going to work with chief and get a list of all of the actual streets as we're coming through, the percentage of actual infractions and speeders. Good of the city, I've got one that's out sick still, not COVID, so thank God for that. The governor's visit, I want to thank the staff, the police for security, the rec center for prep, street and electric department for cleanups, patching, seasonal crew for grass cutting. All the guys did an excellent job with that.
Thank you.
And then also, first of the month, so it's time for employee of the month. Our proposed employee of the month has currently been with the city for 23 years, which that in itself is an undertaking, but he was with the water and wastewater department for 15 years. He's currently in the street department. He's been married for 15 years to his wife Cindy. He has a daughter that's 12. He enjoys camping. He's involved with softball, and when I say involved, he means, he said his wife coaches, so he has to help. He has chickens because of the cost of eggs now. He enjoys woodworking and enjoys yard work, which I'm going to have to have him come over to my house because that's something I don't really enjoy anymore. He's been nominated because he's been very helpful and he's very safety oriented with the guys. And then earlier this year, right before we had some of our major snowstorms, when the others in the department were either out sick or out with COVID, he pretty much ran the department and took care of things while the superintendent and several others were out. So this month's employee of the month is Mr. Mark Barry. And that will end the report.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone have any questions for the service director on any of his reports?
I do. Jeremy, when will the South Park Court project start?
As soon as the Corps of Engineers gets back to me. We've been, I've been calling and leaving messages, but as soon as we can get them scheduled in and get it figured in, we'll get the grading done and then start on that because we have that money appropriated in the budget to work on that.
Okay. Do you have an idea of how long that might be, I mean, months, years?
As soon as they call me back. I'm hoping, I was hoping it'd be started already.
Can you do another follow-up call or something?
Yes, I have been calling them, I don't want to say weekly, but at least bi-weekly, so I'll give them a pause again. I'm trying to work through a recruiter and get in touch, and they're supposed to get in touch with me and they haven't done it yet, so.
Okay, no other questions? We'll move on to Police Chief Matt Arbens.
Good evening, council. Numbers for April are as follows. We had 432 calls for service. We had six crashes, 32 arrests, three warrants served, five domestics, and 170 traffic stops. And I'd like to say that, to let you guys know that the guys are still doing awesome work. We had another couple very large drug seizures and Officer Work has been getting contacts on his undercover pedophile webpage, so he had a guy scheduled to come up here and meet for underage, and the guy crashed on his way up here from down in West Virginia on the interstate. So we would have had a second arrest or report if he hadn't have crashed, but the guys are doing great work and we really appreciate all your help. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Congratulations to the guys on another good arrest. Any questions for the police chief? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Finance Director, Enner Williams.
Good evening. I did finish the quarterly report for the American Rescue Plan Act, and that was getting into Fort Knox, just to get on there to file the report, and Melanie Smith actually helped me do that because she had worked with like 14 other entities. She couldn't get into the website. Our previous reports were not in the website, and she finally got me through that. So that's filed, maybe meaning that we'll get our other $269,000 soon, and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any questions for the finance director?
So how, I do. How long was Melanie here?
She wasn't here. She just helped me out. We didn't pay her.
Oh, okay.
We consult each other when we need something.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions? We'll move on to planning and zoning. Mr. Murphy is absent this evening, so that will end the administration reports. We'll go directly now to the council committees. Mr. Smith, finance.
I have no report tonight, Jim. We meet two Mondays from tonight for finance committee.
Okay, thank you. Again, Ms. Butler is absent this evening for the utility meeting. Two of the members that were absent tonight are on the utility committee, so that meeting had to be canceled. And Beth Oakbridge on the police committee, and she's absent, so there's no report there. Next would be Mr. Vincenzo, streets on the north side.
Yes, Councilman Thrash, myself, we were able to meet with Service Director Jeremy, and he showed us maps of so far, all the streets that the water lines will affect. It's amazing when you see that map. If we start paving a lot of these streets, it's going to be throwing good money after bad. I really suggest if Jeremy can squeeze councilmen in to schedule a meeting with him and where he could show the other councilmen what Councilman Thrash and myself saw, it's an eye-opener. I think we all need to look at it and kind of form our opinions in as council on what we should do with paving. It is a lot of streets, and that was just the water line. The phone and gas lines haven't even been.
Well, we're coordinating with them, but we're also looking at sewer lines, anything else. We're looking at purchasing a camera to be able to check those, to make sure that those are operational and not leaking also before we go through and pave a street and then tear it up, but also with storm sewer, too.
Yeah, but it was. It was really an eye-opener, and I really suggested everybody get a chance to look at those maps and then we can discuss from there. Thank you.
I wasn't at that meeting, but I have looked at some of the maps, and we're kind of in a situation where, just like Jeremy said, there's are some streets that are desperate need of being paved, but we're also going to be replacing the utility lines, and it doesn't make sense to me that if we would just go ahead and pave it and then dig them up within a short period of time to replace these lines and we're just going to be undoing what we did in another year, year and a half, the streets will be a mess again, so I know where you're coming from.
And hopefully we can, because I had a couple calls just this past week on Edinburgh and Killsite, they're really questioning what we're going to do. I told them, you know, we're just, right now, we're working, we're studying the streets affected, but hopefully we can get some good patchings, some paving done if possible, but we really need to look at it.
And again, I agree with Dawn. If anybody has an opportunity to stop and look at the maps, it's hearing is one thing and actually seeing what's going to get tore up if we repave it right now, it's a big eye-opener, so we don't need to, especially with the cost of the paving being up, we spend an awful lot of money that we're going to be throwing away.
Marcel Marceau here. Does the governor talked about broadband? Will that change the picture of what gets paved or anything? Does that wire go in there with?
No, there's a couple places where we have some underground stuff, but most of the broadband is attached to our poles, so it's not going to affect the water project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but does anybody have any questions for Dawn?
Well, Dawn, you were there. What about the streets that have been improved for 2021?
There's three of them that are on there that are going to get absolutely destroyed when we do the water project. So there's a couple more that are possible, but it's something that looking at, you know, what the EPA and everyone keeps saying that there's going to be so much more money flowing towards projects like this, I'm hesitant to pull the trigger just because of the amount of breaks that we have on those streets and the ability to do it. But I'm not saying that we shouldn't pave anything. I actually met with the paving contractor today. He said that he's anticipating the plant starting to be open next week, and then he's kind of looking at its scheduling, but I sat down with him and I went over the project and said, what do you think? And he goes, wow. So it's like Dawn said, it's kind of an eye-opener, thinking about it and seeing what's coming up. I mean, it's a lot of work, so. But I encourage, like Dawn said, anybody that wants to sit down and look at it, come in, we'll sit down, go through the whole project and see what's going on.
Well, I mean, realistically, then, is this, is this a project that will start next year?
The water?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're shooting for the fall of this year. We've already submitted it to the EPA for permit to install. We're just finalizing details and trying to coordinate with the gas company and the phone company to make sure that we don't have any major snafus in certain areas, because if we can move something to keep it away from there, we'll look at doing that. So I mean, theoretically, we're probably 95% close, ready to bid it. I mean, it's that close. We have questions. We're going to sit down with the engineer and go through them. Couple of them are just location questions, some are water line questions, some are size questions, so, you know, we're, but it wouldn't take much to change it to get it rolling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could be a question for you or Elizabeth. If we have a contract with the paving company, are we allowed to back out and not spend the 200 that we have planned on spending?
Yes and no. It's been more than 60 days. Yes and no. It's been more than 60 days. That's the only time that they had to hold their bid for 60 days. After that, there's probably a potential that, you know, we can both go out, but I would still like to look at some of the streets, especially Edinburgh, because that should be a fairly new water line in that street, so it wouldn't be too much of an issue if we went ahead and paved it, but we do have other issues there with the base and everything else, and some storm sewer stuff, so there's kind of a back and forth with it, and I went over all of that with the contractor today. Let's just say he wasn't happy, but he also understood, and we're looking at potential some other sites to keep, to be able to use that money, so.
Okay. What about my piece on South Marietta that's driving me crazy? Is that affected?
We're going, we're going right across Marietta and then right down, down it. So, I'm working with him to see if we can do it, because we're kind of trying to be in the sidewalk on that section, but it's, yeah, it's, it's...
I think worst-case scenario...
Right in the middle of it.
I'm talking about the piece that's on South Marietta, just south of Main Street, that was paved.
South of Woodrow.
And, yeah, just north of Woodrow and south of Main Street. You all know it when you go across it. The worst-case scenario is if that thing could just be...
Yes.
I'll call it paint, for a lack of better...
Yeah.
If you can, what do you call when they skim that, the top layer, that off?
Yeah.
The worst, I mean, if we could, if, but something needs to be done with that piece there.
I know.
And if we're going to tear that up, then...
We're going to trench right across, all the way across it.
Yeah, I don't know. We need to take, you know, we're all proponents of paving, but we're all proponents of not wasting money either, and we need to get that message to our residents, so they understand where we are, so we might want to have you take a look at where we are with that, and, I mean, this is without even seeing the map, because I don't know that I need to see them, other than educating myself based upon what you three...
No, like I said, there are some streets that, you know, one, we either don't have a water line in, which are mostly alleys, or two, they're newer developments, but there's other issues that we've got to deal with too.
Right.
So, I'm not saying that we shouldn't pave, it's just there's certain areas that
Right.
we're going to have to limp along for a while. And some of the, you know, some of the ideas that we've had were, you know, just tarring and chipping. I mean, you know, I talked to Councilman Vincenzo about that and going through. The state's done that in several counties around us and on state routes, so it's not a horrible thing. It would get us through, and it would help keep the roads sealed up and prohibit water from getting in them, and then having the expansion contraction when it freezes.
And there is some areas, like Councilman Thomas said, that they need paved, and I mean, I'm not against saying we can't go in and do a good patch job...
Yes.
knowing it's going to be tore out.
Yes.
But there is some areas that that needs to happen, and I'm not against...
Yep.
that happening.
And nobody said that the cost of paving has tripled. That 200,000 would probably get us two streets instead of six.
Yes, that, and that's part of the other problem too with the package. Like I said, they held their number for about 60 days, which, you know, I'm not extremely thrilled about, but he's added some money into it for cost for overruns. So, we're still going back and forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, JC, do you have anything specific on South Side? Do you have anything on Safety?
Yeah, we had our meeting for the importance of smoke detectors, fire, carbon monoxide detection, planning for fire, having fire drills, tornado drills. You have three minutes to get out of the house when the fire starts, before the smoke gets too bad where you can't see, can't breathe, to die. So, I mean, just having a plan would be great for everybody in here and everybody in the city to have a plan for fire and run drills, because you forget. Kids have no idea. They go hide in the closet. They need to be well aware of the fire drill, so.
Any questions for JC on Safety? If you want to move on to Building and Grounds, Linda, do you have anything?
No, no report.
Mark, anything on Planning Committee?
No report.
And I'll just back to Linda on Fire District.
Yes, the Board approved the health insurance renewal with Anthem and the dental insurance renewal with Emeritus, and that is a 5% increase, which was actually negotiated down from 8%. The Board also approved a diesel exhaust system in accordance with the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, and the, the district has partnered with the St. Clairsville Library, and they will be doing, it's a, it's a, it's a program. It's for the summer reading program, but the kids will receive tickets, and those tickets can be used to get fire extinguishers, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, and they will donate those back to the Fire District, which will then in turn donate it to a local resident. So, hopefully everyone understands what I'm saying here, and that actually is going to encourage the kids to read more, because they're going to get something out of it. Also, they were, they are partnering with the library to do a, it's a thing called Touch a Truck, and it'll be on July 21st. They will be honoring a child, well, I won't say honoring. They will be awarding a child a lucky winner, a ride to school on the fire engine, and they'll do that this fall. There are more details to come at a later time for this. It's not all, it's not all organized yet, but this is just what they're planning.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
And that is all.
Anybody have any questions for Linda on Fire District Report? Can we move on to...
Next meeting.
I'm sorry.
Next meeting, May 25th, 9:00 AM, at the station.
Okay, we'll move on to Recreation. Mr. Thomas?
To, the next meeting is May 19th at 4:30 at the Rec Center. To answer Councilman Smith's question about the concert series and to correct what I said initially, is the first concert is Wednesday, May 25th, so it's right before Memorial Day weekend. There will be 10 concerts between May 25th and August 4th. Seven at the park, and that will culminate on August 4th. It will be the last of the seven there, including July 1st. Friday, July 1st, Community Day will be there. There will be two bands that day, and quite frankly, two excellent and totally 180 from each other bands on July 1st. It's going to be rather interesting to see the group that goes first at 5 o'clock, to see the Joseph Sisters, who are immensely talented, and then those who stay to watch a band called Radio Tokyo, who are very energetic, upbeat, but complete 180 from the Joseph Sisters. So, Eric did a nice job with all the talent, and I want to add, the other three shows will be at the gazebo at the, on the bike trail, and those begin Friday, June 10th, and that will be an acoustic, one artist with acoustic guitar, two Fridays in June, and one Friday in July from 7:30 to 9:00. And that's all. Thank you.
Any questions for Mark on the Rec Board? Okay, we'll move on to the Park District. Linda, anything on Park?
No report. Pool passes are available. If anybody is interested, just contact me, and I'll put you in touch with...
Okay, sounds good. Okay, well, that'll move us to ordinances and resolutions with Law Director Elizabeth Blick. I think Mr. Thomas requested to ask questions.
I have a question before we get started. Is there any way that we can get, Council can get, the agenda and the meetings and any legislation on the Friday prior to the meeting? You know, obviously, this all came in this morning. I saw it, but I had to leave my office to go out of town to work, and I was back in time to review it at 6 o'clock, but I realize there are some last-minute things, but it's a little, it's frustrating, because for me, I speak for myself at this point, if, if we had questions, and we got it on, say, Friday morning or something, then we would have Friday or Monday morning to ask a question. So, I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but they're, these are somewhat rudimentary in the sense that I'm familiar with them, et cetera, et cetera, but if I had questions regarding them, it's a little difficult if we're getting everything on the day of the meeting. So, that's what I wanted to ask in advance, and I don't know who...
Legislation usually does go out Friday. Sometimes there is a delay between my emailing it out and it getting disseminated to Council.
Well, I mean...
And I also got a question. Would you rather me send the legislation out as I get it? Because, you know, sometimes I will get something, and just keep sending stuff out for one big email.
Yeah, I'll speak for myself, yes.
You just rather, I can do that?
Yes. Yes, I, listen, I don't mind working every day.
Okay.
Whether it's a little bit or a lot.
Okay.
That's what we're here for. I just feel rushed, and for me to make the best decision that I can possibly make, not only for my constituents in my ward, but the entire city, I would love to have it, so I can look at it over the weekend, et cetera, and so that's, that's all I want. I don't know if anybody else is...
I'll speak to the agenda. The agenda's pretty tough, especially recently, probably the last six or eight months. There's been so many last-minute changes on the agenda that it, quite honestly, would be, we had two changes on the agenda actually today.
That's the least of my worries.
Well, that's what I say, so.
Because 95% of it, I know it's there.
Yeah, pretty much, there's not that much difference, so to send the agenda out, normally you're not going to get till maybe over the weekend, because sometimes it changes Monday, so.
Yeah.
Normally, the agenda's been sent out on Monday. Otherwise, it would be no good to send somebody an agenda that they read Monday morning and come to the building and find out it's different. So, that we probably won't get out till Monday morning.
And that's fine. That's, you know, it's more the legislation than anything else.
Right.
For me, just speaking for me.
My good question.
No, I agree. It's, if we can get them as you get them piecemeal, that would help.
Okay.
Because I didn't even look at my email, other than last night, till midday today.
And Mark, we have discussed this before, so.
Well, okay, I, yeah, before, before we took, before we took office.
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
So, thank you.
Yeah, okay. That's all. Thank you for the time, yeah.
I apologize. I should have brought this up when, to the Service Director report, but I do have one question. A temporary water line coming across Reservoir Row. With the changing of the temperatures, the seasons, the expansion contraction, do we have to have that inspected?
No, because it's still the temporary line, but Wednesday, we're having a pre-construction. The loan came through, so we're going to be starting, hopefully next week with the contractor, starting there to tear out the old line to get the replacement. We ordered the pipe for that ahead of time, so it's been sitting down at the electric building in the yard, taking up their parking spaces for the last six months, so they're itching to get it out of their way also.
Okay, okay, because I wasn't quite sure, you know, with the UVR raise, I don't know if it's UVR resistant pipe.
It is, but that pipe allows for expansion and contraction too. There's some flexibility with it to go through and...
4710, which is the top of the line.
Yeah, it's, I wouldn't say it's that high, but it's, it's up there and will allow for it, because everything is actually heat welded together, so there's no actual mechanical joints anywhere. It's all heat welded, so it will move, and the whole pipe will move, which is part of the reason why ODOT wanted us to close that, that lane on the bridge.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would also make one suggestion before we go any further. Go to JC, and I'll get back.
With regards to the paving, our money that we had budgeted for 2020, 2021, and what we budgeted for 2022, if we decide not to pave or don't use all the money, are we going to put that in an account that makes money?
That was my idea, that instead of, well, we can't really put it in an account to make money.
It just rolls over.
We just roll it over to the next year, so what we would do...
It'd just be a carryover.
Yes, what we would do is keep it in a paving, uh...
Allocation.
Yeah, allocation, so that that money builds on top of it, and then we put the next year's on top of it, but we can't put it in like a CD and make money with it, but it would be, but, you know, I find out that government limits a lot of stuff that would be nice and easy to do.
Yeah.
So. The only suggestion, and I don't know who does, who doesn't, or whatever, the only suggestion I'm going to make is, since we're going to be sending legislation out just as it comes in, I would just, for everybody's benefit, just a suggestion that everybody make it a point to at least check their email once a day, or sometimes even twice, again, just check it and see, so that, because I know in the past, there's been people that haven't seen their email for several days, and that, that doesn't do any good to set that out, or so.
That's my only suggestion.
Just for example, with this, the Ordinance 2022-18, we knew that was going to be coming last week, but then, when you get down to the end of it, the last one down there, the 2022-22, the 21 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Code of Fire Ordinance is, we didn't get that until Friday, so that one...
Oh, I understand. I understand it was last minute.
Yeah, yes, but...
I certainly do. I'm not criticizing.
We can, we can get that out and do the piecemeal and go through that, but that's what I mean, is a prime example of it. We knew the one was going to be here, but the last one, we thought, well, we're going the other ones, get it in, so.
Wendy Feesel.
Yep.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Okay, the first piece of legislation is Ordinance Number 2022-18, and that's the ordinance authorizing the advertisement for bids to lease oil and gas owned by the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, declaring an emergency. And on this, it is similar to what we counselled previously passed, except we've added five additional parcels. Two weeks before bids were to be opened, the oil and gas company who was interested in leasing the property said, "Hey, wait, we have these other five pieces of property we want to add," and they wanted us to just call the paper and add it in. We knew that was going to have to be separate legislation, but when it came, as Jeremy said, when it came last week to bid opening, the land, the land group, that is, works for the oil and gas company, misunderstood that they would need to resubmit their bid in a sealed envelope, follow the code, and failed to do that, so we had to start all over again. So, there are now 12 parcels, and we'd like this to be emergency, so we can get it started, do our advertising for...
Because we'll have to do it the five weeks again.
Yeah. What's the total acreage? I'm guessing.
Well...
That's no big deal if you don't have it, I just...
Yeah, I don't have it.
That's okay, yeah.
748.
It's going to be like, the, the offer was like, we're going to end up with like 250,000 roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, wasn't it like 60 something or 60...
I think it was like 60 something.
67 acres.
Maybe something like that.
Around 67 acres.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have the first reading on Ordinance 2022. Can I shake down? I'm sorry, Mike.
I was wondering, what's the story on going under city and mining, like whether it's coal or oil and gas?
Okay, coal was something entirely different because of the way, the way they have to do it. The oil and gas, with the way that they do it now, with the fracking, they can be two miles outside of the city limits and come under the city. So, what the state has done is they've got it to a point where it's, what is it, 60% in a unit?
Uh huh, yeah, 60%.
Once they have 60% in, in a unit that they have, they can just unitize the entire rest of the parcels.
They can take the other 40% by forced unitization.
I guess my question was more damage to the city. Like if you take coal out.
There's a void left, yes.
I don't know, typically under cities, they mine or extract the oil and gas. I mean, I don't know.
I mean, most of the hydraulic fracking now was where they'll come in, it'll actually drill a hole and they'll frac the rock. You're talking a void of roughly, I don't know, what are the diameters, 12, 18 inches?
12 is a.
I mean, with the actual boreheads. So, yeah, I mean, you have those voids in this strata anyways.
You're talking about coal being.
Yeah, three or four feet.
Yeah, coal is much closer to the surface.
Yeah.
The deep shells are going for, are thousands of feet under the surface. So it's not going to be like longwall mining where you would have immediate subsidence or the old room and pillar, eventually that subsides, too. This is so far underneath the earth that any subsidence would really be negligible to a surface owner.
Okay, so the short answer is that it could cause a problem, but most likely will not.
Right.
Okay, hopefully it doesn't affect any of our water streams or anything like that.
Shouldn't.
Should, yeah. Water sources are way above.
Yeah.
We'll eventually get to legislation.
Okay, we'll try this again. My first reading on ordinance 2022-18.
Ordinance number 2022-18, an ordinance authorizing the advertisement for bids to lease oil and gas owned by the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
That is the first reading, and they request emergency legislation.
I agree that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate occasions be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Second. Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call bid to see if council wants to consider this emergency legislation. And it does require five votes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, council will consider this emergency legislation. So we will at this time read it again prior to a vote on the ordinance itself.
Ordinance number 2022-18, an ordinance authorizing the advertisement for bids to lease oil and gas owned by the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Any good of motion?
Yes, I'm moving.
Second. Okay. Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
68.4. Is the new total?
I neglected to see page two of the ordinance, I apologize. I could have done the end of this myself, but thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to the next piece of legislation.
Okay, the next four, I'm just going to discuss with council as one package. I call it the Walter Drain Legislation. Walter Drain is the publishing company that does our codified ordinances. They are, they tell us what state statutes, administrative code have changed. They cross-reference that information into our codified ordinances. And it's like real estate taxes, we're always running a year behind with it. Unfortunately, this got passed for several years, or, well, actually, three years, and then we just added this year. So 2020, 2022-19 is for 2018, 2022-20 is for 2019, 2022-21 is for 2020, and 2022-22 is for 2021, and that is for this past year. That was the piece of legislation that just came in. They were able to get it to us Friday afternoon, so that last one got done then, so. And we're asking that all these be emergency, just so we can get caught up. They can do the replacement pieces we need for our books.
Okay, we'll go with first reading on 2022-19.
Ordinance number 2022-19, an ordinance to approve the 2018 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anyone wish to take further action on this?
I have some questions, but. It says like the reprinting, are they going to reprint the big binders for each one?
No, they just do like replacement parts, so it's.
Updates.
It'll be updates, it's like any.
Who's cost? I mean, who's, are they going to do this for?
That is a net question. I believe it's our cost that, you know, we pay for the updates. It's just like, in my law office, if I have a book, it gets updated so often, and I get billed for the updates.
I mean, I have some concerns. I briefly looked at the new charter that we got, and I feel there's a lot of things missing from the old one. And as soon as I can put my hands on my old one, I'm going to compare, but.
But Mike, this isn't the charter.
This is the ordinances.
Yeah, this is, you raise a valid point, because I saw some of that, too, that I think is missing from the charter, which, you all know my position on the charter. But this, this is not. As Elizabeth explained, as you know, Ohio laws change with every legislative session. And for us to stay current with our laws in the city, within the city, this company, what they do is they take all the new laws, and then they cross-reference them with what we have that's outside the charter, and they're listed here. And then, yeah, those are all.
Oh, these are all, these are, these are.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, there's a lot of them regarding traffic law and criminal law, et cetera, et cetera. And this is important, this is important for the police department and some of those. But that's what they're doing, and yes, it is our cost. I mean, they're in the, that's a, I mean, Elizabeth, imagine that job.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Trying to keep track of the legislation, that's a huge thing. But we have to have this, to operate efficiently. Otherwise, we're, you know, whether it's a traffic citation or whether it's something else, if we're not in compliance.
Yeah, if we're not in compliance with state code, then we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, can I read it? Do you give the read still?
2022-19. Okay.
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions be read on three separate cases. Sweet. Three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Thomas, okay, we'll read, see if council wants to consider this emergency legislation.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Let me, let me give you an example, if I may. We're in the middle of the, I apologize. And Matt, back me up on this one. On the first one, take a look at the traffic code and look at 335.09, display of license plates amended. Now, what I'm going to guess is that is the new law that went into effect that we no longer have to have a front license plate. Is it, am I thinking right? Yeah. You see what I'm saying, Mike? When that law changes with Ohio, as a local government, we have to also comply with state law. And that's, I just wanted to give you an example, because that's an easy one that everybody knows. No front license plate.
I can't speak for Mike, I can speak for myself. I just got this today, and, you know, you know this from having been in law. We don't know this. Do you know what I mean?
Oh, I, so I understand, I, I'm not.
I personally wanted an opportunity to look this over and see exactly, you know, what I'm, what I'm seeing here. I got it in my email and it's, you know.
Well, you heard me speak. I, that's a different issue for, I agree, but in this case, we don't have a choice.
Well, I understand that, I understand that, but I didn't have an opportunity to even look at it.
We could have, you know, Matt could come in and cite somebody into mayor's court.
No, I understand, I understand it, you know, after his explanation. But I had not had an opportunity to look at it. And that's my thing. Like he was saying, you know, you get it at 3 o'clock in the afternoon and try to pass on an emergency basis at 7:00.
Okay, on the advice of the law director, I vote yes.
Okay. Smith is a yes. Thomas?
Can I think about it?
Yes. Thrasch?
Yes. You're freezing for a prison.
Vincente?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, it will be considered emergency legislation. We will now read it for prior to voting on the ordinance itself.
Ordinance number 2022-19, an ordinance to approve the 2018 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion to, on this ordinance?
So moved.
Have a second. Mr. Thrasch will now vote on the motion itself.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, motion to ordinance 2022-19 passes. We'll move on to ordinance 2022-21. Or 20, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2022-20, an ordinance to approve the 2019 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Do we wish to make this emergency legislation?
I mean, doesn't matter. Okay, I'll, I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Second, my Jaycee. And take a roll call vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll now read 2022-20 for the final reading.
In the 20, ordinance number 2022-20, an ordinance to approve the 2019 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
The motion, second. We'll now take a roll call vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, 2022-20 has also passed. We'll now move on to ordinance 2022-21.
Ordinance number 2022-21, an ordinance to approve the 2020 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
We have a second, Mr. Thrasch. Take a roll call vote, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, this will be considered emergency legislation. We'll now read it, ordinance 2021, for the final reading.
Ordinance number 2022-21, an ordinance to approve the 2020 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Thrasch, second. Second, Mr. Thomas, take a roll call vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
2022-21 passed. Move on to 2022-22.
Ordinance number 2022-22, an ordinance to approve the 2021 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring emergency.
Second. Mr. Thomas, second. Take a vote, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, this will be considered emergency legislation. I have the final reading on 2022-22.
Ordinance number 2022-22, an ordinance to approve the 2021 reprinting of the St. Clairsville Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Second, Mr. Thomas.
Jordan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
We're good?
We're done.
We're done, all right. That concludes the legislation for this evening. The next meeting will be Monday, May 16th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the city building. This time, if anyone has any questions or comments, accept the motion to adjourn. Second. Meeting's adjourned.